So it's after 5:30, so I think we'll go ahead and open the hearing of the zoning board of appeals. My name is David Limberg. I'm here with Maureen Scanlon, Elizabeth Silver, Sarah Mortherup, Bob Riddle, and Carolyn Mish from the Office of Planning and Sustainability providing staff support. I guess the three voting members will be the full members, so Sarah, Elizabeth, and myself. We have two items on the agenda. And notice of this hearing was published on August 30th and September 6th. Before we hear the first application, I'll just ask, we have an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to comment to the board about anything other than the two applications before the board tonight, seeing none, we'll move on. In each case, for each application, I'll ask that the applicant or its representative present a brief description of the application, or it'll have a chance to ask questions from board members, and then the public will have the chance to also ask questions about the application or comment. I would ask that all comments and questions be directed to the board, not to each other, and I would ask that everybody who speaks come up to the podium and identify yourself by name and address for the record. I think that's it, right? So, anything else? The first matter of course is the request for a commercial finding amendment by New England Pat's Franchise Investment Partners, Inc. to expand non-conforming use to add a restaurant at 55 Damon Road, tax parcel ID is 18D-26. And I'll go ahead and ask the representative, thanks.
Sure, thank you very much.
Please.
Good evening. My name is Rich Seifek. I'm the attorney from Springfield, and I represent the applicant tonight, New England Pat's Franchise Investment Partner, Inc. The applicant, the owner of the building is American Dream Realty LLC, Mr. Manny Sardina, who's with us this evening. Mr. Tom Yvonne, who is the representative from New England Pat's Franchise Investment Partners, is looking to open up a business known as Hot Head Burritos. What's coincidental about this evening's presentation is that one year ago tomorrow, September 14th of a year ago, we gave you the exact same presentation. This is the Damon Road project, 55 Damon Road, the old car dealership, and I just hand you just a little, just to read familiarize yourself with the layout on the little packet illustration, which is the proposed commercial development packet. If you just go to page C3, that was the old building. You can stop me whenever you get familiar with what we talked about a year ago.
C3 is right here.
So you're referring to the new packet you gave us?
Yes, yes. Just to re-familiarize yourself with the site, it's 55 Damon Road, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the site in and of itself. But that was the old building. Then if you flip a page to C4, that is the new proposed development that's going on right now. Everything was allowed a year ago tomorrow. This board and the planning board approved the special permit, any made finding, to allow for the Dunkin' Donuts to go in, and that's going to be a freestanding building. If you look at the illustration on C4, you'll see the freestanding proposed Dunkin' Donuts building to the right, and then if you look to the left, you'll see what remains of the old building, and that was the proposed 6,200 square foot commercial building. And that's why we're here tonight. And if you flip ahead, a little bit further, to A1.1, well, three more pages ahead, that's the layout of the three retail spaces that were approved for the freestanding building.
No, CBA, it's a loose one?
It's in the packet, yeah, just a little more plan.
C3.1?
It's C3.
Oh, it's a separate space.
It's a loose space.
Yeah. Yeah, and I handed you a separate one, which is a separate document in there. That's actually the build-out of the space we're talking about.
And this, are you all going to planning board on this?
No, we don't have to.
You don't have to?
No, it's already been approved. All we're really doing is seeking to amend your finding, which allowed the retail space, but it was supposed to be for office space in general. And we have one retail space already under lease, and then in the course, Mr. Ted Cassell has been the commercial broker involved. He's been looking for tenants. And over the course of the past year, one of the tenants has taken the biggest space. If you look at A1A, the tenant number one space, 3,200 square feet, is going to be known, a company known as The Marketing Doctor. So they're a tenant in that space. And then if you look to space number three, which is 1,800 square feet, that is the space that we're here to talk about this evening. And that's the space that New England Pat's Franchise Investment Partners, Inc. would like to open up a small business known as Hot Head Burritos.
Is that on A1.1?
Yes.
Is that at the lower-left corner?
Correct.
And is that facing, is the front doors that facing Damon Road?
Correct.
Perfect. You get it.
What about those unidentified spaces in this one plan, A1.1? Are those connected to these spaces? They're part of them?
It's all the same building. Yeah, they're going to be divided by walls, obviously, but tenant space number one will be The Marketing Doctor.
Yes.
Tenant space two is unoccupied right now. We don't have anybody.
I guess I'm asking about, there was, it looks like on this plan, there were six spaces, but there are really only three spaces?
Only three, yes, right.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, there's, I know what you're saying, yeah, there's a middle wall there kind of thing, yeah. It's vertical. That's double shaded line.
It's a carrying wall.
Yeah, it's a carrying wall.
Okay, but the tenant space goes from front to back?
From front to back, correct.
The whole width of the building.
And one of the individual handouts that I gave was just the layout of the interior space, how Hot Head Burritos intends on setting up the interior space of that space number three.
Thanks. Looking at A3.1, am I seeing a drive-up window?
It's a drive-up window for the Dunkin' Donuts. It's not a drive-up for this commercial building.
Oh, okay.
And that was approved a year ago?
Yes, yeah, everything, yeah, there's no, there's no changes to everything that was approved. The only reason that we're here this evening is the use. Everything that was approved is identical. It's being constructed as we speak. So there's no change at all to the plans as approved by this board and by the planning board, nothing. It was all about just finding the tenants, and after a year's search, we've got two tenants. The Marketing Doctor and Hot Head Burritos. And Hot Head Burritos just needed an additional finding from this board. That's really the sole reason that we're here this evening.
And we already, a year ago, approved a restaurant in the form of Dunkin' Donuts, which will be there in the second building.
Absolutely.
So the only issue before us is whether the approval of the expansion of the restaurant use beyond Dunkin' Donuts to allow Hot Head Burritos is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions.
Correct.
And this was in a, this is a GI zone where restaurant use is not allowed.
Correct.
It's industrial, but I understand this site has never, ever been used for industrial.
Never. Car dealership.
And are there other restaurants along Damon Road, or?
I don't really, oh, way up near Route 9.
That's not, yeah.
That's not GI?
It's not GI.
Carolyn, can I ask, can I ask Carolyn, has just background? There were lots of, and you provided us with that paperwork, there were lots of conditions with the Dunkin' Donuts application that the planning commission requested.
We're going to assume that those are still in place, and those will be the ones that...
Those will have to be implemented. And so the only changes within the building's footprint that you and the planning board already approved, allocating one of the tenant spaces from office or an allowed use in general industrial to this burrito restaurant.
So whatever traffic changes were recommended by the planning commission for that first Dunkin' Donuts use are, what, we would assume are fine for this? Or this will be going before the planning commission?
It's not going back to the planning board. The, your review would be, sort of, that's why they submitted the information about the traffic and the different hours of operation, was to compare that to what was already approved relative to traffic. So because there's not an expansion, a footprint, it wouldn't trigger, going back to the planning commission?
So as I recall, when we were looking at this originally, if you were coming, what's the direction? From Bridge, from Route 9 to King, what's that direction?
That's north.
North, okay. If you're coming, northwest. You're coming north, there's going to be no left turn in there, right?
Correct.
They have to go down to the lights.
Correct.
Take a left, and go into the smaller curb cut.
From Industrial Drive.
From Industrial Drive.
Correct.
Coming out of there, which, is there, there is a pocket, right, to take that left turn? No, there's no pocket. There's two lanes. There's an arrow, but there's no pocket, right?
There's no, it's right in, right out only on Damon Road.
No, 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 to take the left onto Industrial Drive from Damon Road.
Oh, there is a turn pocket at the signal.
Yes.
At the signal.
There's two lanes. There's not an additional pocket, right?
There's a, there's a left turn pocket on Damon Road to turn left onto Industrial Drive at the signal.
In addition to the two lanes that are already there?
There's only one lane.
No, there are two lanes.
At that point, it changes to two lanes after the light.
Yeah, it's only one lane going into the light in that direction, and then it...
No, wait, wait, I'm coming from Route 9, towards King. Before the railroad tracks, before the light, there's two lanes. No.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, after you go through the light at Industrial Drive.
No, before you hit the light, as you're lining up with the light, there are two lanes.
Yeah, that's where the turn.
And that's a turn hot head. Okay, so the left lane of those two lanes could either go straight or left.
You're still looking at tenants.
Now, you can't go straight.
Left turn, 99 miles.
No, it is not left turn only. It is not.
I don't know, it's the one side.
I come in there almost daily. I know that this is, you can either go straight.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's fine, but, no, I mean, it's...
It's done there.
Well, yes, there's that. But my, where I'm going, no pun intended here, is if I, if I were to go straight, then there's that mishmash of all those different lanes to, you know, to sort of sort yourself out as you're by the pride station.
Yeah.
After you go over the tracks.
Yeah.
Yes, but if you, you are allowed to be in the left lane to go straight, and it probably works better to go straight to be in the left lane. So if we're adding more left turn, more people turning left into that, which we are doing, I understand what your argument is about the 12 to 2, excuse me, 5 to 7, but we are adding traffic that will be taking a left in rush hour when it's the busiest, clogging that left turn if people are going in there. So unless there's a way to build yet a different dedicated pocket, that's going to increase the backup, all the way back up to the bridge on Damon Road.
With a caveat.
Which is?
Damon Road is going to be totally reconstructed and redesigned.
How many lanes will it have?
I, well, I have to pull up the design plans, but we're at 100% design. They've incorporated all the traffic data for incoming projects. They know about this project. This project knows about the Damon Road reconstruction. It's not going to, the number of trips won't affect the throughput on Damon Road. I can pull up the design plans in a couple minutes, but...
Do we know about when that would happen?
It's on the tip. It's already scheduled. We're at 100% design, so it's in, what is it, a year, so say?
So you're talking about doing this now?
Yes, it's already been built up, yeah.
Well, but there's still, I mean, if you've been by the site, they're under construction. It's going to be a while before they'll be, yeah, eight months.
Next year.
So, but there'll still be a gap of over a year, at least, from what you're saying in that?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, I'm just recapping from a year ago. And then coming out of there, you don't have to go out, if you're heading up towards Route 9, you don't have to go out industrial. There will be a forced right turn onto Damon, correct?
Yes.
From there, okay, all right, so, all right, so. All right, thank you. I am interested in what Damon's going to look like because...
It's going to be beautiful.
I think, I think the concern for me is in that uptick of traffic in a location that already is, you know, overcrowded. If there's a redundancy in the area, probably. Because that's the plan you were wanting to refer to. Well, I've seen, I saw that.
Okay.
But, so I know, I just, I think, what's going to happen with Damon, I can't decipher on this. I can't decipher what's going to happen with Damon Road, can you?
Here's Industrial, here's Damon. Here's Industrial, here's Damon.
I don't know how many lanes it'll be. I don't know how wide it is.
Oh, you're in future Damon Road.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
I appreciate Elizabeth's questions, and I'm not sure this is like the best time to raise them, but I do think we're basing our thoughts about the future of that road. And the city is clearly really moving on changing some things about how that road works, and including thoughts about zoning, because obviously it's not been, nothing's been industrial on that site. So it would be great if we were not having to deal with these issues, appeal by appeal, where the city's zoning was actually, you know, at a place that supported what these folks are asking us to put in there.
Right, so the city is, has talked about rezoning this parcel to general business, in which case the use would be allowed, right? And I think frankly, the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, drive-through generates probably more trips in and out of that intersection than a place, a smaller place that doesn't have a drive-through.
Well, that's probably true, but we're just piling on top of what's already there, so it's not a good thing.
The other retail space, we don't know. It's the unknown. Crystal Wall could generate more traffic on it throughout the entire day. For example, I E. Loffler, we generate traffic all day long with the people coming in and out, with closings and office appointments and so forth, and so on, Marketing Doctors. So it's kind of like, there's going to be new, every business that's going to open up there, free are going to be allowed, they're going to generate traffic. The question is, this Hot Head Burrito is going to generate substantially more detrimental than any other particular use that's already allowed. My suggestion is it's not going to. Mr. Yvonne is very experienced in the, I'll call it the fast food industry. He's got six other subway stores. He's just started these Hot Head Burrito stores. This is like his third store, I believe, and they're kind of a slow start. This is not a McDonald's. It's not even a subway. He has subway stores. Hot Head Burritos has a kind of short window of sandwich kind of dinner type of thing. It doesn't anticipate generating a ton of traffic, to be honest with you. The traffic that's going to be there with, hopefully the traffic's going to, that's going to be off the site for Dunkin' Donuts, whatever, is the traffic that he hopes to grab, that someone's going to send him to get a coffee and a sandwich type of thing, which a lot of these kind of marriages are happening now in a lot of the retail world, where you get a sandwich and a coffee type of thing. So independent of what other use is going to be there, he doesn't anticipate drawing a huge increase in volume. His peak hours are off Dunkin' Donuts' peak hours. He doesn't have a breakfast menu, so to speak. Dunkin' Donuts, as you know, is a big morning. They're 24/7, but they're the other morning rush hour. Hot Head Burritos is looking at a lunch dinner type of thing. And then if he gets any business during the off-peak hours, he's only going to have three employees during peak hours, only two in off-peak hours, so that kind of indicates that they don't anticipate a large volume of business during the course of the day. So I kind of think it's kind of a good, good fit for that particular building and that particular location, and I would highly recommend that you approve the amendment.
So the, I do, yeah, I do have the design plans up. The lane striping will essentially stay, it'll be, there'll be two lanes going back to where the River Run intersection is, and there'll be a new crosswalk there. There'll be two lanes all the way, and both of them, the left lane will be straight, and left turn, the right lane will be straight, and right turn direction. And then it will go into, maintain two lanes after that intersection, and then become a left turn and a straight at the King Street intersection.
I'm not understanding the difference between that and what you just described and what it is now.
I don't know, I'm saying there's not going to be a difference in the lane striping at the signal in front of this. There'll be other changes that address throughput throughout the entire length of Damon Road, but it's not going to, for this section, it will be the same as what's there. And they certainly have incorporated the proposed uses along here, as well as, I mean, the real issue are the conflict points of turning movements. There's closing curb cuts up and down Damon Road where there are excess curb cuts, which is really what causes those conflicts, as opposed to ones at singleized intersection.
All right, so when you say closing the curb cuts, I'm assuming going back to that other little wall in there, you're talking about closing, but are you cutting off some or just closing them so? I mean, people will still be able to turn left off Damon into that little wall.
Some of it will be closed completely, because there are multiple ones. So every time you have a multiple curb cut, you have more opport, more conflict points, and that affects the flow on the network. They'll be minimizing the widths and minimizing the number all along, with the idea that it will, that will improve the flow of traffic on the entire segment, so it's not just about, you know, at Industrial Drive. And, and if this helps you at all, DPW had no concerns for the application for the change because of the changes that were already approved in the access points at this point.
I did suggest DPW doesn't sit on Damon Road between Route 9 and King Street at rush hour. I mean, I think it's a deep concern.
But one thought I'm having is, we're not comparing, we're not, the question isn't, is this substantially more detrimental than the current vacant use? It's, is it substantially more detrimental than perhaps a permitted as of right industrial use? Which is speculative. What does that mean?
Well, it would be the previous non-conformity, which is the fourth dealership.
Which was the fourth dealership, right?
But I would also say that you, when you're thinking about your traffic situation on Damon Road, it's about the entire street. It's not about this. And the whole point of reconstructing Damon Road is to address the entire segment and also deal with the Route 9 crossing over the bridge, the Coolidge Bridge, and all of that. The idea is to create better flow patterns, even coming from Amherst, and getting people through and around. So that's the whole reason why the state is rebuilding Damon Road.
One of the issues, and I know this is not anything we have control over because it's the state, not us, but, you know, was the turn on Industrial by the tracks and the delay in that light. I mean, it got better, you know, from the initial light, but it's still a lot of backup, especially coming in that direction that we've been talking about because they want to make sure there's nobody anywhere near the tracks when there's a red light. So, you know, there's a, there's a cutoff of the number of cars between King Street and the tracks, which backs it up. So I don't know how that's going to be addressed, but if that continues, you know, with that cutoff and the inability to move beyond those lights, and there's only still going to be two lanes, and there's an increase in the left turns, that's, it's going to cloud it more.
What I think is that you have, you're going to create a situation here where people who are contractors and that will be able to come through the, where they're going to get their goods and things. They'll be able to come to a restaurant there rather than going into town. I think it'll lighten the impact of the traffic in the neighborhood. People aren't going to be going to the restaurant for coming from Amherst, that traffic is already dedicated to going onto Bridge Road and out to Route 9. This is going to create an opportunity for people to have lunch at this place rather than driving downtown to have lunch or down King Street to eat at McDonald's or Taco Bell or something like that. It's another facility that's going to serve the community well, I think.
Right, but we're not really focusing now on traffic or traffic reduction anywhere else in town. The question is, the traffic increase on this already burdened, wet road?
And the other thing to think about, too, is sort of coupling this with the other improvements that were made under, when you approved the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through. So they made substantial changes to that site. Was it enough to sort of also capture the other uses on the site, including this 1,100 square foot burrito place? And, you know, I think making those driveway, restricting the access points restricts all the flow to that site, and I think, you know, the morning peak is probably going to be worse for Dunkin' Donuts, and so I think if you were going in that, in the other direction during the morning, maybe you would have that same concern about Dunkin' Donuts. But I think from the city's perspective, we certainly felt that the changes that were made a year ago in the plan, in the design plans, would address those conflicts on and off.
I wouldn't be as concerned in the morning because it's a right turn. You know, that, I think that's a huge difference, I think, than a left turn and block, you know, to do that left. Maybe, maybe the traffic signals will be better. Now there's, there's, I don't know if there's a dedicated left arrow there. It might be for a very short time, I'm not sure.
I think it's a little, actually, it's a little bit long because what, the vehicles taking that left, they're, they're going north and west on Damon Road, Route 9, going into the industrial park. Those are big tractor trails. You get one or two trucks and that's it.
To give you a little bit of analogy, only by my experience, I, this is kind of analogous, but on a much smaller scale than West Springfield. I represent Raymore and Flannigan on Riverdale Road at the Riverdale Shops. Everyone knows that they put up a 70,000 square foot Raymore and Flannigan Furniture Store, what used to be Showcase Cinemas on the other side of the street. So we rezoned it, and we put that store in there, and then the traffic flow in and out of Riverdale Shops is worse on the level left. We had all traffic studies gone left and right all day long. We had huge problems with lights, signalization, getting people out because of all the people going to Home Depot in the back, Costco, and table and bind, huge issues. We came back two more times and put it in the Olive Garden and in Aldi's, on the same path, the same parcel. And it was already at a dysfunctional level, and we had these same type of issues, like, well, isn't another little restaurant like the Olive Garden or a big restaurant like, or the Aldi's going to generate much more problems? The answer was no. At the end of the day, it already is functioning at the level it functions at. The people that are going to go there still go there, and it didn't change. It's been in operation now for probably seven, eight, or nine years, and it functions just as well, whether it was there or not. This is almost the same analogous type of argument in the sense that Dunkin' Donuts is going to generate traffic. It's going to generate, The Marketing Doctor's going to get it. This 1,100 square foot burrito place is going to generate some increase around lunch hour, hopefully, but it's going to add to the character of the neighborhood. It's not going to be substantially more detrimental, and that's kind of the standard. And it's kind of going to enhance that whole idea of this kind of being a little general business area. And Damon Road is going to be substantially improved. So I don't think, and we tested the waters now for a year, and this is the, this is the two tenants that we were able to capture for that particular area. So I don't think it's going to really create a way for detrimental problem to the area. I think it's going to enhance the look of the little type of two buildings that we have on site, and I think they're going to pull a little bit of business away, you know. The idea is to get some of the business from the Dunkin' Donuts for those who stopped at the lunch hour, get a coffee and a sandwich type of thing, and on they go. It won't have any impact in the morning, which is, I think, is a big plus, to be perfectly honest. To be perfectly honest, that's a huge plus to have this business generate no, no, no business at all in the morning, so to speak. And the off-peak hours, they don't generate a ton of business either. So that's my two cents from prior experience.
Is there anyone else here who is here to ask or comment about this application? Seeing nobody. Yeah, I think we understand what the issues are.
So this is going to be open from Carol? Carolyn, you mentioned crosswalks. Can you remind us about what the planning board requested as a condition in terms of crosswalk? Does that mean there's going to be a sidewalk built in from where to where?
There's a sidewalk wrapping the entire parcel.
Where is it beginning and ending in terms of the, like, does it go to River Run?
So that part is, is part of the Damon Road reconstruction. There's going to be a crosswalk at Damon Road, I mean, at the River Run. There was, I have to go back to the plans. There was a debate, there was, the sidewalk was originally going to be on the opposite side of Damon Road. For this parcel, the middle sidewalk will run all the way past the entrance drive on Industrial Drive and keep, continue, keep going.
Mr. Cernan has put, I think, four feet of sidewalk on, on Industrial as part of his approval.
Right. So, but part of, the crosswalks are part of the Damon Road reconstruction. So this applicant isn't building crosswalks across Damon Road. They're building sidewalks on their parcel and beyond down Industrial Drive. And these hours are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Correct.
Thirteen hours.
So if there are no more questions from the board or from the public, I guess we can motion to close the public hearing and then we'll continue our discussion. But we won't be able to have any more input from the applicant or, so I assume there's no other comments or...
Well, the only other comment is if there's any more that we can do, we'd be happy to provide the information. But Mr. Cernan has spent significant dollars on this project already. He's, he's put a ton of effort into to make this a really nice spot and to improve the area. So if there was any additional information, I would want you to vote without giving us the opportunity to provide the information that you could possibly think of, but I can't think of any right now. That would be my only comment.
Well, for me, it comes down to the difference between the retail that has already been permitted and...
Well, we can, I suppose we can have a conversation without closing it. So if we did need more information, yeah.
So we have, there's an 1,100 square foot retail location that, what sort of, I'm not seeing a big difference between a retail, say, I don't know, name a retail use that would be permitted that we wouldn't see.
Ian Taylor.
Hair salon.
Hair salon. Barber shop. Can generate all kinds of...
You know, it's, it's true that, you know, if the burrito place is doing really well, they probably have a little more traffic than a hair salon, for example. But I'm not, given the, given the site plans and how much it's been, it's worked, it doesn't seem like a big difference to me.
Well, I think what we had originally understood is that it was not going to be retail by office. So this is a shift from office to retail, meaning restaurants going there.
Good point. Good point.
Not that I...
So it isn't res- retail.
That applies on restaurants or not, but I think that's...
Restaurant retail. So going from office, say it's a lawyer's office or a, a, a marketing, could be called an office. That's not called retail. But it's, I'm not seeing a big difference that would affect.
Yeah, my gut feeling is that Damon Road is a disaster. Any of us who've been stuck on any given afternoon rush hour, I just avoid it, to be perfectly honest. I try to avoid Damon Road. But, but I'm not, I'm sort of, I'm sort of agreeing, I suppose, with Sarah. I'm not sure that an 1,100-foot specialty restaurant makes the situat- situation subs- remember, the word substantially is in there, substantially more detrimental. And, and it's encouraging to know that there are plans to improve Damon Road dramatically, if not substantially change this intersection. But I also think, I also recognize, we have to deal with the situation we have now, not what may or may not happen in the future, although Carolyn is saying it will happen. And I do have faith in the traffic wizards. I, I believe in them.
Engineering, it's the funding that's the, that's the big question.
Yeah, so it may or may not happen. We have to deal with what we have now.
Right.
But, but I think I'm sort of coming down on the side of, I'm not convinced that this, this really small restaurant space, takeout space is going to be substantially more detrimental to what is already a problematic road.
This can seat 44 people, right? That's what your plan says here.
I believe so, yeah.
That's a lot of people. That's a lot of cars. And presumably you're going to try to work to fill all those seats, you know? You're not going to have a business that you're just going to say, oh gee, we're going to have a few people here and there. That's it. You've obviously done well enough in your other businesses that you've had enough people and enough business that you've been able now to go out and try to do yet another one.
But it did indicate it's primarily a takeout business.
But this means for 44 people. And so I would, I would have to assume that that's the hope, that you would get 44 people in there at a time or even that there would be people waiting.
We could take, we could easily take tables out if that, if there's any indication. I think that they lay out the tables there because that's all the space they really need. It's a common space. It's a burrito. You're getting a burrito and you're either moving on or sitting down to eat. But if you want 22 people to sit there, I'm sure there's no problem with, that's the number of tables.
If you go into, say, McDonald's, there are seats for 100 people. But there are never 100 people in McDonald's. I mean, you have, you have a space that has room for 44 seats. I mean, the size of the building will accommodate 44 seats plus all of the...
Kitchen.
Kitchen and large bathrooms and everything. They're using the space. Hope we can get 44 people.
Right, 44 seats is 11, is only 11 foursomes, four tubs.
You're looking at right here. You got 50 seats right behind you.
Right, 44 seats is...
We're talking about the corresponding number of cars.
Yeah, but 11, again, 11 four tubs. I'm just doing a nap. I don't know what the exact configuration.
I mean, the hope is to fill the seats and, and that's, you can't, you can't have a party and then you could fill the 100 seats in McDonald's. So I, I think you have to, when we're considering this, and I mean, here, guys, but when we're considering this, I think we have to look at what the potential is here and what the hope would be on the part of the business in terms of filling it up. So if you've got 44 people sitting and then you've got more people taking out, that's even more cars.
The business is going to keep cars, it's not, cars aren't going to be going, using this place as a destination. There are going to be people coming from the industrial park. People from that neighborhood can come across the industrial park and Jonathan Wright's or someplace to have lunch or...
They're tapping existing traffic. They're not creating more.
That's right.
Well, I don't know that any of us can actually see that. I mean, I understand you guys are saying that you don't think that it's going to really generate that much more. It's not substantially more detrimental. That's fine. I mean, I think we're just going to have to...
Yeah, and it's a unanimous vote. It's not required for a finding.
Well, I would also, if this was a plan, what, the plan we haven't seen for the other tenant, the marketing doctor, might have 50 cubicles in there. It's a, it's a, it's a large, it's a large space. We've got this much space.
Right, and they're hoping to expand into that second.
Or if it became a fitness center, you'd have 200 rolling machines.
What's the square footage of the marketing doctor?
Thirty-two.
So it's, it's three times what...
Three times, that's correct.
So if this was proposed for office, I would assume a density of at least that many chairs for, if it was an office space. You might have that same number of cars coming in the alley. Yes, I'm, I'm...
But had there been no restaurant, had there been an office, it's a real...
If, if this one space was presented as an office, that floor plan might be, would be a similar density to this.
Hold on. Yeah, we, we, we can, every decision does not have to be unanimous. So I guess we'll go ahead, unless you want to talk about, it's sort of been alluded to, limiting the number of tables, but...
I think that would be hard to enforce.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I guess if we have all information, should we move to close the public hearing? All in favor, the second all in favor unanimous, and then a motion on the application for the finding.
I move that we approve the finding, commercial finding amendment to Mainland Pats Franchise Investment Partners to expand non-conforming use to add a restaurant at 55 Damon Road, map ID 18D26.
Second before the session.
You said what needs to be said.
Okay, right, just a second on the motion. Do you want to second the motion? Can I second the motion?
Of course. No, I think you should, you're just seconding the motion, so it's on the floor to vote on that.
Is it okay with you that we vote on it?
I would just point out that DPW has not raised any concerns at all. And I'm sure they get plenty of complaints about Damon Road. And that I think Damon Road is problematic whether or not this happens. And I'm not convinced that it, in effect, will be substantially more detrimental. And I think it will also be an improvement, at least aesthetically, to the, to that stretch of Damon Road. And I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Did we close the hearing?
We closed the public hearing. So any other...
I'd like to also point out that I agree with David that Damon Road is one of the most problematic stretches in the city. And I'm eager to see how the city and the state improves Damon Road. But we're fighting a battle here that is based a bit on patterns and inertia, which is that a stretch that connects two ramps of an interstate are likely to be the places where these kind of, where these kind of businesses succeed. And we've got some empty spaces on King Street, but King Street is not where people go in and out of to get on and off the interstate. So I'd rather recognize that that stretch of Damon Road could be better used and used in a way that's more intuitive for travelers. And this really seems like we're going in that direction.
And I think that what Maureen just said really bolsters my position that this is substantially more detrimental. Because if it's going to be a place that there's going to be heavy traffic because of the location, it's going to increase the traffic in a place that I don't, you know, again, it's really unclear what the supposed fix is going to be for Damon Road. But I think in both directions, at the time of day especially, I mean, this is 13 hours we're talking about, but even in the rush hours, in both directions, I think there are serious problems and this will come up.
I'd like to say that I think that it will have no impact on traffic. It'd be an aspect of the...
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a crystal ball thing. We could find that it's lighter than expected. We could find that it's heavier than expected. That is certainly a risk. So all, the motion was to approve the findings. So those in favor, that's two, opposed, that's one, so that the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
2019, good. Thank you. And we'll now move to the second and last item on the agenda. Thank you for your patience. It's an application for a commercial finding for North Hampton area pediatric parking lot expansion at 193 Locust Street Florence, map ID 23B, that's your name.
Hi, I'm Terry Rennel, Rennel Engineering, local in town here.
Thank you. So the only, the only question, we have members of public have to get to see it. So sir, if you want to either relocate or have questions or want to look at this, you're, you're welcome to.
Sure.
Only if you want to. I just, it's just...
I would love to, yes, certainly. Would you want me to...
Do we already have this? If we have it, you can put it in a position that everybody can see.
I'm the only one here.
What number is this one that you're looking at?
Let's see, five, the layout plan.
Five of nine?
Yes. What I'm here for is we're asking for a finding for non-conforming use, non-conforming use basically. So currently, North Hampton area, why don't you start with the existing conditions plan, which is stage two.
I've got it down here, if you want to share this with me.
And so what we're looking at is currently, we have a non-conforming use to the parking lot actually in the right of way.
You mean the street layout for Locust Street?
It's in the street layout. And typically the parking's required to be, I believe it's 10 feet back. So the whole frontage, all this parking is non-conforming. And so what's being proposed, if you look at the layout, is to pull it back to the property. There are two additional spaces that are being proposed, that's other than you pulled back. So it won't be...
So you're reducing, reducing conformity.
In the front.
In the front. And then there's an addition.
This has nothing to do with what you're asking us to do, right?
No, no. It's just the parking.
And the buffer, so they're also adding tree landscaping in the front, which are trees, were required 1 per 30 feet of frontage. They're not coming all the way to 1 per 30 feet, but they're adding four, I believe, four trees to the function.
Can you show us where you're moving there, the trees?
The trees are on the plan, which is number seven. So I believe it would be two per side. I wasn't part of that discussion, so I'm not sure how many people.
With who?
In, in...
Oh, yeah, so, no, just in terms of trees along the front buffer, they can certainly go in the right of way. But there, there, I think a total of four are required and there are three being proposed.
So the reason for that is site distance. There's a site distance issue, having out of the site, looking down Locust Street, the sightline.
It's difficult because it's a slope. It's a grade.
Yeah, and the road curves a little bit.
And the cars are going sixty.
Right, right.
You've been spying on me?
Well, yeah, I mean, everybody in Spence has seen that. Well, it's good, anyways. But so it's been an issue just simply with the shrubs. And so that's, that's why we're trying to keep the trees back and just limit the areas.
So, so, but you're increasing this span, right?
Yeah, the, the project is to increase the parking.
So this goes right up to the, that building, that small...
It gets very close, yes.
Small, like, lawn and repair place.
Dropping off.
And so that you can create these parking spots as well.
Right, then looking to...
And there's a bit of a grade change there. And what's happening back here so that you're getting more spots?
It's just striking reconfigurations.
Oh.
Yeah. So...
And this one is going to the planning board as well?
Because of the addition or because of the...
Not the addition.
Because of the parking triggers setback.
Okay, because of the setback issues.
No, just the number of parking spaces remaining. Anytime there's a new parking lot of more than six spaces, it triggers that.
So I'm confused, and what are we looking at?
Nonconformity for the front.
Just the front.
And the buffer, so it's just...
Just the front, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And the buffer being, uh, refers to the fact that the plantings will not bring it into full compliance, but they will bring it into, more into compliance than it presently. So we're reducing the nonconformity in terms of the setback, although it's still zero line, lot line instead of 10 feet.
Right.
But it reduces the existing nonconformity. And the planting plan also reduces the nonconformity.
Right.
And this is also a finding, okay? So is there anyone here from the public who wanted to comment or, or ask about this? Okay, since, seeing nobody. Nothing else changes but lighting. And then, of course, planning board is doing a site plan approval only because of...
Right, so the planning board is, it's also planning board and, and of conservation.
Coscom.
The buffer don't...
So on the, on the tree planting, this is one of them?
Yes.
Right by the curb cut?
Yes.
So is that gonna be a problem with this site?
No, no, that's, that's why it's set in here rather than out here. So there's, but as the car pulls up here, they have a good site mark down the road.
Would it be possible to put one in here to make it totally conforming on this side?
Actually, um, they would, they would end up losing another space. The intent was to do low, low level landscaping across the front areas and try to minimize, you know, the trees.
So even the current plantings, by the way, are, I think, are beautiful. But unless you're in an SUV and you exit that parking lot, even those beautiful ornamental grasses, like, they really block the view.
Well, that's part of the re...
So you're gonna move that back?
No, that's not getting back, it's getting lower.
Perfect.
Because right now, there are, there's smoke bush about this tall, which is too tall. There's the tall grasses, same thing.
And the trees, you're suggesting those two trees will be limbed up enough?
Right, and there's, and there's setback enough, too. So, so as you come out here, this one's not such a big deal because Locust Street goes essentially straight and, if anything, to the left. And you're looking, your oncoming traffic is the far side rather than the close side. And so, so it's the left-hand movement, left-hand traffic is more of a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, how many, how many parking spots would be lost just by putting a planting over here on this side?
This one.
Is there any reason not to bring it into conformity?
Even if we intend to back?
No, if, yeah, to have the fourth planting, right? The fourth one would bring it into conformity?
I guess I'd just remind you, there's been a huge amount of money just to gain 11 spots. So, yeah.
Okay. The city doesn't really feel any need for that?
No, it's not, but...
There's an opportunity, um, looking at this area here, where it says to remain as in their site. I'm not, I'm not clear about exactly where this is.
There is a large tree in that, on that corner already, so right, right here.
Oh, this little icon is, it looks like a shrub.
That little, that little, yeah, this.
Yeah, it's, it has a quite big canopy, actually. So that's kinda...
It's a hidden one, this tree.
Plus the spacing, right, it's conforming either there.
Right, and it may har- it may be hard to, um, yeah, I mean, I think the, um, the spacing between, there may not be enough spacing and tree growth area to put another one there without, I mean, I suppose you call it a parking space. It is true, I mean, it could go into the right of way. It is, I mean, I would have to agree that, um, uh, it, given the whole point of the project is to create more parking spaces than to the point of one. But I think for the right of way, I would just want DTW to take another look if you were gonna suggest planting in that.
That's okay, as long as they're all right with it.
These are tulip trees and elms, um, well, the ones along the front are, you know, so they'll be a distinct trunk and then the leaves are higher, at least as they grow. So I see a retaining wall along the property line or very close to it. And then towards the back, oh, I see. I thought, I thought you were expanding the parking back there in that area. You're not really changing that grading back there, you're just taking care of the stormwater.
Right, right. And you're doing some navigation by getting some places to move back.
But that's another concern, right?
Right. Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? So I guess motion, everyone's ready, motion to close the public hearing.
I, um, uh, a second.
All in favor, unanimous. And then another motion on the application. Do you want to do this one?
Sure. A motion to approve the, um, application for parking lot expansion ordering for Locust Street on this map ID 2013-11.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. And then we do have, before we adjourn, a number of minutes. Looks like two of them made 24.
I don't wanna pull them up.
June 28, August July 12, and two on August 9, two sets of minutes. Right, Hart, that was a little bit...
Oh, yeah, probably is. As it was, same question.
Whoops. Very complicated.
And Sarah noted to me that she was in fact present on August night, so I changed that.
Yeah, that was then my...
I think there's a typo afterwards.
Yeah, it was, yeah. It's fine, I, I don't, I can't remember what it was.
So motion to approve all of these.
Start from there.
All in favor, unanimous, thank you. And I guess just motion to adjourn. Do we need to talk about scheduling, or we're back to two times?
Back to...
Well, I wanted to ask about that other, other request regarding exterior for solid changes to service that building on the agenda?
Oh, that's the planning board.
That's, that's planning board.
Thank you.
I think that's under the line.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For planning board, yeah.
Okay.
So I guess motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. So you have something for...
Second.
Two weeks from now?
Or is it two weeks from now, or...
Great, yeah. Great. Um, yeah. Oh, okay. There is nothing for the 27th. I mean, there's so much that they just didn't really know.
That's definite, then, right?
Uh, let me think. No, nothing for the 27th.
The 11th?
Don't know yet.
Okay.
I am going to be away both the days of September, the 11th and the 25th.
Hold on a sec, because I'm pretty sure that I am out of the country on the 11th also.
I actually think we don't...
Yeah.
Have a file for the 11th, because the deadline is this week. And I think it was just, um, there was something that came in.
It would be good if there was nothing. I was asked to do a talk, but I think we need to do the 11th.
I'd love to hear your talk.
I, I, um, I don't think we have anything for the 11th. But I need to confirm tomorrow.
You'll let us know tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great. And we already know we have nothing for two weeks from now.
Oh, that's good to know.
Thank you. Readjourned, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.